February the 10th. We have winter festival, which is sponsored by the PTO. And that's going to be Thursday, February 16th from 5:00 to 6:30. We will have hot dogs and crap pot meals and all sorts of goodies. So that families can join us. Last year we had several winter games. Students were able to actually take their families on a little bit of the snow shoeing trail that we did. And show off this four state build. So we'll see what weather brings. If that will happen again. And then lastly, we have February break. And then just a couple of other items. Thank you, thank you for your community. We had many, many donations for the holiday season, whether it be for the holiday party or for students in general. Some community members gave small gifts for every single student. Others gave classroom gifts. So we're very thankful for the community, parents, and school district. And lastly, fourth grade transition. Frank and I have started discussing fourth grade transition. I know at this recent meeting, he had kind of mentioned how many students we projected go to Newport. And I've also been talking with the Montessori school, trying to hear out a few things. I know last year it was discussed potentially doing some form of presentation. So I'm just putting out there now that we have done a conversation about transition from fourth to fifth.
Any questions? Last year, we did do something, right? Where we introduced everybody to all the choices that they have. Yes, maybe we should plan.
Yeah, I was thinking that as I was reading the policy on tuition program, that we probably should be about scheduling another open house if we want to do that. And the last was pretty last minute notice, so.
And you know what? We should add that to the policy because that will help us remember it. This is where it is. This is what we do each spring, probably March is around April at the latest. So people actually know what their choices are.
What do you think the best way is to organize that, Frank? Is you want to like reach out to the schools first to see?
Well, contact the school. I think if we have a rough idea of when, I think we did it on a Saturday, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And yeah, I think if we pick out a date and then contact the schools and let them adjust to it. If we give them enough room ahead, they should be able to do that.
Probably like after the town meetings, right? Like in April.
Yeah.
A couple of months.
Good.
That's what I would.
Yeah, not too close to the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. On to you, Ben.
Here we go.
Yeah.
I guess it is my turn. Sorry, guys.
No more.
Jumped right in. Was so excited about that budget that I was like. So folks who follow school business know that January is generally speaking, pretty much a budget heavy, heavy month. The school board, the school year operating budget, generally at the same time as the budget prep and presentation meeting, which will be January 31st.
In two weeks.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that still is, is on track.
In the school.
In the school.
Repeat that.
Yeah. In the school, January 31st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the school. Big white. Currently, the school board was presented a budget of $1,704,759. It is under consideration. And this evening, the board will discuss that further. At the district meeting in March, the school board will present a slated warrants. One will include your operating budget and one potentially for a trust fund addition, I would imagine. Okay. The warrant will be discussed at the budget hearing meeting. And the bulk of the remainder of the month is really focused on inputting data into the Department of Revenue's website in preparation for school district meeting. So again, tonight's meeting, one more meeting on the 31st to discuss the budget and solicit public input. And then the school board will move to adopt the operating budget for district meeting in March. School board has been given PowerPoint presentation from the prior year to prepare for next, the two week meeting at the end of this month and again for district meeting. So we'll also have a PowerPoint on the 31st, again, in big white. Folks will be able to see all the different delineated areas of the budget for discussion. Election of officers for school district will open on January 25th and close on February 3rd. Currently, the position of moderator, school district clerk, and treasurer, one year terms are open and one school board member, which is a three year term. Again, filing date, January 25th to February 3rd. And finally, the month of January is also the month where we do all of our federal reporting for all of our staff members, meaning W2s, 1099s, 1095s. And all of those submissions will be made prior to the end of the month. So a few things during the month. We did receive a final breakdown from the Commissioner of Revenue from the state of New Hampshire for the current tax rate. Tax rate was finalized on November 29th. And the is $7.48. Total tax rate of $14.22, which includes the municipal rate, county rate, local education, and state education. Your local tax is $919,361. And the swept tax, which is also collected through the local government, is $131,000. So the amount to support this budget that we're currently working under is $1,050,933. And that's raised at the local level. So that $1,050,933 offsets expense budget of $1,705,496. So you can see all of the income that comes locally for the budget. So the school board is also given the town appropriation update, which is in their budget report. Currently, tuition bills for all the schools have been received and are up to date, with the exception of Claremont, which we generally receive in the spring. Tuition rates for FY '24 for Newport have not been given to us. And for folks who follow that contract, they're generally due November 15th. That's when we're looking for those numbers. Several attempts have made to get that information, and we currently do not have that. We projected our tuition rate at a 5% increase. So potentially, it could come in a little bit lower. And we'll keep working on them over the, between the next two weeks so that we can have that number for the budget hearing. So an adjustment can be made if necessary.
That's a contracted requirement, you said, just.
That's in the contract between the districts that we're currently working under, yes. There's no new items on the revenue side to report. And trust fund balances, special education, $137,862. Facility, $21,292. The tuition trust fund, $53,259. And the Van Samford Fund, $13,138. There are no other items of financial notes. Board has received all the manifests and have expense and revenue budget reports for the month, as well as all expenses made during the month. And that was my report. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to take those now.
But did you put any sample warrants into our?
Not for this evening, no. Because we have to discuss if there are other items that you want on there, then I'll prepare the warrant. So right now, it's just to hear the reports of the board, the operating budget, and potentially a trust fund warrant article, unless there are others. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, so moving on to policy committee. So the policy committee, the two policies that are ready for us tonight, that voted on by the policy committee last week, took us two meetings to come to a conclusion for both of these policies. We discussed both of them twice. Thanks for giving the agenda. The first one is the use of facilities. Did the other board members get a chance to take a look at the policy tonight, before tonight?
Yes.
It, I mean, it's just like three pages. So while the committee did approve this to move forward to the board, I will tell you what I think about it. I was the only person to vote against it. And my, my reasons were, I mean, I have many reasons. First, I, I didn't know that this was even an issue, something that, you know, people have requested. And to be honest, at the committee meetings, when I asked, you know, how much use, how many requests, what's happened, I did not get a straightforward answer. It wasn't like two people that asked, the people that asked, 25, I, nobody. It feels to me, I mean, it was more a feeling thing. It felt like this really hasn't happened. So I don't know why this is happening. And that leads me into the second reason.
Are you saying, sorry not to cut you off, but are you suggesting that the policy is actually not required or?
It's not required. And that was my second point. So, I mean, we got this committee together to review required policies. And, and important policies, and this is, I mean, in my opinion, neither. You know, the other side says it covers our budget, but it's well, there's two pieces. It's a, the town owns the buildings. And so it's, it's a nice thing to say you can use it if you want. And there are other school districts who do this. But they typically have dormitories and big spaces. And, you know, we tend to use town halls and stuff like that, and it's available to everybody. So we just don't, we have, you know, two classrooms, three, I suppose. It's, it, to me, it just seems an odd thing for us to do.
It almost feels like it could belong in just a contract between the town and the school. Like, what are you allowed to use the building for or whatnot?
As opposed to the town?
I don't know. Is there an agreement that exists between the town and the school district for the building or?
I mean, the town owns the building, buildings.
Yeah, normally, like if you, like, were to rent a building, you'd get, here's a contract rule. You can't, can't do, like, you can't sublease it.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't have a contract like that with the town.
So I'm just wondering if that's maybe a place to put something like this.
I mean, that, that's a separate issue. And it would be whether the town would permit it to happen or encourage it to happen. And maybe that's a good first step since it's the town's buildings. I don't know. But this is also, this is about handling it, right? So maybe that is a better first step, even something for us to, to talk about.
Can I ask, is it short enough that you can read it to us?
It's three pages long.
Oh, my God.
Yes. And we reviewed it last time briefly. It basically, it would charge these people for, some people, there's, there's different categories of people and groups. Some would get it for free if it's town residents and whatever. If it's an organization, if it's a nonprofit, they also might get it for free. But if it's not, then they might get charged something. So somebody has to process the request, and that would fall into the principal's lap, I guess, case. And that's the third reason I don't like it, because.
And it takes a collection of the money.
Sorry?
Takes a collection of the money that would be generated. What is that?
Presumably a principal. And, and where does it go? Like, that's not specified here, actually. And those are good questions.
It's miscellaneous revenue, so it goes on to your revenue sheet. It would go into your local revenue. If you were sorting it.
But it's, it's another chance for the principal. Now, what she says, you know, she doesn't expect a lot of requests, so it's not a deal. But it's still another thing. And we know that you're extended, you know, highly. So I, I don't like the idea of giving you something else to do. So those are the reasons we're not liking that.
I mean, when I saw it, I thought, wow, this seems like, I don't want to say overkill. And I, and I did have a thought, like, I didn't even know we were letting people use the school.
I mean, neither.
Frank, I'm sure you have an opinion on.
Yes. So I, in my opinion, is that it is an important policy. And it's an important policy because the school district needs some kind of protection so that you can go through a process that's fair and applied equally to all people and all groups who may want to use your facility. And right now, we don't have a lot of use, but we do have occasionally folks who will come in and, and use it. And the problem is that in absence of a policy that has some regulation about how you determine can and cannot, you're, you are open to everybody. So the policy allows, it's, it does have categories, and it's a little bit complicated that way, but designed to allow our local groups, any school related group, any town related rec group or anyone like that, to have free access to our facilities and won't, wouldn't have to pay a fee. But if somebody came in that was profit making and wanted to host a presentation of some sort, we would have a way to, first of all, evaluate whether we would let them use it. And secondly, then to establish what would be a reasonable cost to cover our expenses for having them there. And to have someone assigned to be the person responsible so that when Cole came in the next Monday or the next morning, or Mary Beth, that they wouldn't find their room all disturbed and upset, that things would be kept safe. So I would, I would guess that 99 out of 100 schools have this policy. I do consider it to be an important policy. It's a policy that gives you some reasonable protection so you don't have to worry about your building being damaged or that kind of thing. I'm sure Primex is going to be extremely happy to see it when they look at setting our insurance rates. And that's why it exists.
Will it bring our rates down?
I mean.
Will it bring the rates down, you think?
It will.
What is KF-R referred to? I saw it.
Oh, that's the regulations. There, there's the policy, but then there are regulations on what the process is. There's a form that people would fill up and give that to Cole. And then it would be evaluated from that point. It's just the process to do that.
I mean, my next question would be, what harm do you think would come of having this policy, Jody?
I don't see any harm.
Access work.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen very often.
Then you got to set up a website. So, you know, because the submission would be that.
Oh.
That's how it was.
Did I miss that?
That's how it was.
It says that.
No. It would just be a phone, well, they need to, there needs to be a presence on the website explaining it, right? So that's just then, phone number, email.
Yeah, yeah. I imagine posting policy and then the, underneath it, the documents that you are needed to fill out.
Yeah.
Trust me.
And then they just contact you.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I would need much dedicated online, I would imagine.
Right, so there's evaluating which group it is, is collecting the money. There's, and that can cause problems too, right? Just collecting money, Ken. Um, yeah. So it's, it's a first reading tonight, though, for both of you, by the way. So things to think about.
Just a general note, I just don't know why it came to me now, but I was looking at the date stamp on the bottom. We should probably have, like, something that says at the bottom of all these policies, like, the date at which it needs to be re-reviewed.
There are no, generally, it doesn't.
You don't have, like, every five years, you gotta read this policy to make sure it still makes sense?
No. It's a good idea.
It's.
They get it through there for a year, but it's too much work.
Yeah, it'd be way too much work.
Yeah.
But it might come from.
We need to do a few every year, right? So that in five years, you're coming back.
And that's a whole point. But you put a date on here that says this is due for review again in, you know, whatever.
Sure, but it's going to be when the school board approves it, then you know, right? So then we make a policy for having, handle policies, right?
Yeah, we probably do want that.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm not saying that to Valerie. Yeah. Kevin?
Um. I don't see any reason why, I don't see a lot of time to hand on any one person by doing this. And if Frank is.
I can't hear you, sorry.
If Frank is correct, it would directly affect our insurance rates. I don't see why I wouldn't try it coming in. Because, I mean, honestly, I would see maybe an hour of somebody updating the website to post that there is a policy for it and contact the school for the policy. And, you know, a 10 minute conversation every now and again.
Sure.
Once a year that somebody actually wants to.
If it's that much, I mean, but that's the thing. I mean, I don't even know that anybody is, even just the way it was described, you know, some people might have used it, you know, or have used it. What if you just don't allow people to use it? I feel like there's a lot of little, I don't know. Again, it's not like an auditorium. I know sometimes people rent classrooms in places, but I don't know.
Can I ask? When I was formerly part of the PTO, we regularly met at the school in the kind of open room in lower ed non-classroom, but the energy way. I would think that with a new policy that we would request permission for that, yes. So, I mean, I think there are, the PTO still needs there. So even if it's not a lot of groups, you know, if there are groups that are.
Well, thank you. That's the first example I heard.
And that seems to be more a matter of, you call Nicole, and she just puts it on the calendar. PTO, I presume that's basically probably how it's worked to this point, right?
It doesn't look like it puts a lot of hard.
It's not complicated.
But the PTO group is not paying for it. That's going to be.
It sounds like you should know in the work, how much they pay for the policy.
It doesn't look like it puts any, like, real hard requirements on people, apart from maybe, like, the insurance requirement, which makes sense. I, I didn't see in here, though, if there's any guidelines on, like, how you determine if you allow it to somebody. Or is it just your complete discretion as the superintendent? Or is there some criteria? I just thinking from the other side of this, somebody might say, well, why do you say no to me and not somebody else? You know?
Yeah, so you have to have reason, and it has to be a good reason. Because once you open up, there's essentially a constitutional right that you cannot discriminate. So people have a right to use it. So if you say no to somebody, you have to be able to show that you believe that harm could happen, damage could be done, or whatever. And you can require insurance for things that are dangerous or, they don't have the gym. So one of the things we don't have to worry about, we don't have to worry about somebody coming in and wanting to do a gymnastics tournament or something where there's potential for injury. But it gives, it just gives you, and that's the base, you would say no.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a schedule for that so that you can cover your expenses. Basically, you know, your heat, your electricity. If you have to have someone come in and clean up sodium, if you have to do a repair. Somebody recently, I was at a school where they were having basketball tournaments and kids got running around, and the first thing you know, they had a window that got broken. So we were able to collect funds to pay from the folks who ran that heart, that, that to take care of that. My sense was that this community, communities like to feel, and maybe I'm wrong, but communities like to believe that their buildings, especially when they're taxpayer funded, somewhat belong to the community. And they like to have use of them, whether it's a library or the town hall or a school building. And I can see small groups of people getting together, maybe to run a little class, you know, maybe a craft class or something of that sort. It'd use Little Red as a place to do that if they wanted to. Or a book club, that would be a nice place to sit around and do something like that. I mean, there's all kinds of things. And by having a policy, publicizing a policy, it may actually cause some interest amongst the people who are paying for it to say, oh, you know what? We can use the school to do this when it'll be asked. And just make it more of a community, available, community building rather than just the school.
So you allow them to use the facilities? Like, there's a printer, there's, you know, there's paper, there's, you know, pens and whatever. That, that's not the policy.
It requires a school person, it requires a school person to be present. So, and that's, and that's why, so that our supplies don't get used and those kinds of things. And that it's cared for and maintained. Very standard, there's nothing unusual about it. We're just a little bit smaller than a lot of school districts.
Yeah, I don't really, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I mean, it seems to make sense. I don't think it does any harm. It covers us on insurance reasons. I might be a little bit more, like, specific on, like, I'm just looking at number nine where it says that you might be charged an extra fee if there's damage. Like, I would a little bit more precise and say, you'll be expected to pay for repairs or whatever. You know, that way it's.
Yep, and that's why we're doing these reads, so we can add those things.
Yeah.
I actually thought, when I brought it up, I thought it would be a very quick, easy one. I didn't expect it to be controversial and take, you know, two meetings to get through it. But anyway, first read, we got another, or read it again.
So the second one is an update on tuition policy. Again, first reading. It's by, this is dead mark, and it should be until it's totally approved, that's closer to here. We currently have. But I don't know, it was just now, religious is written in here now. We must have just done that. Does anybody? That we have religious. We did, we did. Yeah. So it's now secular or religious private schools. So here's where we ended up with, and this next sentence is one of my two that I wanted to update this tuition, uh, tuitioning policy. Because we had this private school introduced this year. And then the question was, how do we put this in the policy? How do we make it fair for everybody that everybody can get the same thing? And, and what we discussed, came to the conclusion was this sentence. Families interested in introducing a new school to the tuitioning program were advised to do it at least one year in advance. And we really can only allow schools who have it, didn't get exceptions this year. And partly our fault, that was because a year and a half ago, they came to us asking, and we said, yes. And did say that they had to do this process. So, so that basically was the reason for this, you know, exceptional situation. But in the future, they would have, let's see. So that's one part.
So, Jody, a question on that. I'm just thinking, we're at a point now where we need to know if, if somebody's thinking of a different school. I mean, we're working with the one school to try to get them approved. But no one has approached me, anyway, to say, oh, we're interested. How do we, how are we going to give people a year? We're just going to have to make them wait a year?
At their doors, that's right.
Yeah.
They would come to the board and ask, right? This isn't just a list, just like that other family did.
I mean, I would think it would be worthwhile to send home a letter or something to, you know, to all the families, just saying, if you are considering a school, it's on our list, please tell us as soon as possible.
But it's also from the school families and people who moved to town. It's not always.
Right, but it doesn't hurt to let them know.
Certainly. But it's not going to be. Yeah. And?
As far as when you would be sending out this letter to let them know that happened in third grade, that way they can prepare and have that year to potentially get their docs in a row for their child.
That makes sense. It'd just be a letter sent home to parents in third grade. I mean, it could also be in this April forum.
So I was thinking, but.
Fourth graders show up to that for the, you know, what the choices are. So it's not quite great, it's not long enough in advance. So, yeah, third grade.
Yeah, it might just be that people aren't really thinking about it until the fourth grade year. So we need to get in the habit of telling people early and often that here's how it works.
So we're going to add to this, I mean, this is us working on this policy, right? So letters will be sent to third grade families to provide matches. There's interest, something. Putting it as a comment.
Maybe also communicate to the Montessori families, or this doesn't go until fourth grade, right?
Yeah, that's a good.
That's true.
So they can tell them seventh grade to be.
Yeah.
I mean, and to that point, I mean, I guess at any point, somebody could change, right? So especially as we're revising these policies, it might not be a bad idea to just tell everybody. Say, here's how it works, you know, like, an info packet or something. Has the schools, has the policies.
Yeah, so we don't get too specific. We have to keep changing that.
It becomes a introductory packet.
Yeah.
It becomes a introductory packet when a child is enrolled at the school for the first time.
True.
And maybe we put it on the website too, and sell a little page for how the school choice program works.
Just link to this policy in the list of approved schools. At the end of the list, you just say, want to add a new school? Click here. Here's your policy.
Yes, so take a look at the policy.
Did you read the sentence? I can hear this. I advise and consider required, did you?
Where?
It does say, it does say advised. You are...
Advised. Because if you advise them, they don't have to do anything. Advise them. So I think if you need required, say required. Or you can just say advise, you know?
I could say advise to do so or risk not getting approval at the beginning of the school year.
I mean, advised is nice because it leaves some flexibility, but it also gives you the easy out to say, hey, this, we advised you to do this.
Shall is a good word.
Shall is a good word. Parents shall notify the school board.
A lot of our essays say shall.
Shall, lots of shalls. I'm so lost. Tell me what...
So families interested in introducing a new school to the tuitioning program shall advise the school board one year in advance.
Are you, are you making the change?
I'm putting them in comments, right?
Oh, in comments. Okay, I was looking at the, yeah.
Well, no, this is on the board. We think we need to.
I thought that probably worked. I...
Oh, no, no, no. I think once it goes to the board, we get to reading, change, and we're done.
Okay. Well, then, what if something gets drastically changed?
It's drastic, maybe, but it's always still the board that gets to decide. And if the board decides, thank you for the work you provided for us, and we're moving forward with this work, the board still just gets to vote on it. It's just advisory from the committee. Unless we have a policy, I'm sure, right? That's the only way that could work.
That's the way it can work.
I mean, not every time, yeah. Like we maybe did, like we were on policies, we didn't know. So, yeah.
So did you comment on the last policy that we just went over, that Aaron had suggested stronger language in regards to paying for the energy?
I did. Can you comment on that? I don't want to mess with the internet, I'll miss. Hopefully this is working.
I see your comments coming up.
Yeah, they're coming up.
Number nine.
So we're going strongly?
Yeah, I mean, a fee to me sounds like you're going to get like twenty bucks, but you gotta pay the board to pick this, direct.
Must have got rid of my list, no?
Okay. We don't want the language.
Don't worry about it.
Performance was pretty there. Superintendent will present yearly data of students to the school board and advise families upon the progress of their children and the appropriateness of their school choice. In other words, if they're not doing well in a particular school, you might consider changing where the child is great with superintendent, deal with that based on how they're doing. If a significant number of current students are not demonstrating growth at the current school, superintendent could advise the school board to end that contract with a significant number of students. So that was it. Okay, questions, comments? That's it. Those are the changes. First read. Anything missing? We good?
Yeah, my only comment is to go back to the change on making the language say shall notify one year in advance. If we're going to adopt this policy now, I think it would be fair to just let parents know if you were planning on making a request for this coming year, get it in now. Because sprinting is on at this point, they don't have a year.
You know, just today, like...
Yeah, if we're adopting this policy now, then obviously parents don't have a full year for this upcoming school year. So they might have a school that's already accredited, already approved. I just feel like we should at least give them the opportunity to...
Well, it's good to think that this one was in reference to like a credit already.
Oh, it's just...
I thought it was definitely a school that were not...
Not approved by New Hampshire.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, that makes sense. I missed that part.
All right. So we're good?
Thanks, Sam.
So I guess I can try to come up with language before the next meeting instead of this and I'll write or something.
Oh, yeah. Hold on, sorry, not to dwell on this, but I don't know that it says that. It just says, families interested in introducing a new school to the tuitioning program are advised to do so.
Shall be advised.
Right, but it's not, it doesn't say anything about that only applying to schools that aren't approved by the state.
Introducing a new school...
When I read new, I thought new to creating the school choice program.
No, that's a good question.
I think the law covers them if they're approved.
The what?
State law, I think, covers them if they're approved. Because the state law...
Yeah, but this sounds different. Right, we think we just need added word, a word.
Oh, okay.
So a new school, a new school, tuitioning program that is not, well, not approved by New Hampshire, not approved school.
A school not approved by the New Hampshire Department of Education. I think their exact phrase is approved for attendance.
What's their approved, what's their approved by the state where they're in?
I think it's the point across, however you were. By the DOE.
Yeah, by the DOE.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, not approved.
Yeah.
Or not previously.
Not approved. I think not approved works.
Not approved. Not approved.
These two sentences, why we've been working, you're not confusing in some ways that a school that has recently opened.
Right.
The school was, wow, oh, yeah, the school not approved, superintendent's writing here for the O E. Great fact. Yeah, very good. You nailed it.
Glad my confusion could help.
Yeah. That's perfect. Exactly.
Judge that though.
All right, we get another meeting to, you know, look through and make sure you like the language. Moving along, strategic plan.
I don't think we've actually had a formal meeting since the last board meeting, but we have gotten a lot of work done, obviously, and I think Frank's already sort of filled everybody in. But we got the surveys done and out and we still have a small number of surveys to input, but they're more or less all collected and inputted and Lynn is off to work crunching numbers and we'll have that ready for discussion at the meeting, which is this coming Saturday. So I don't think there's any other...
This is the fire.
Yep, it's the fire. And it'll have to end promptly at 12:00 because the ones who could be cleaning up by 12:30.
All right. Come one, come all. All right, so budget review and discussion.
Okay, so not sure what your pleasure is. So last week, or last meeting, we went through the budget. Board members hopefully have had a chance to look and bring back questions. There's a, there's no significant change in the budget with the exception of salary and benefits. So how would you like to proceed, Jody?
Well, I have, I reviewed it and I have questions, suggestions and things like that.
Yep.
And you, and I apologize if they repeat.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I guess it's fair enough. So if the screen budget has your expense analysis, I will.
Yep.
I see you office is by $9,000.
Yep.
I don't remember what.
It's just salary and benefit based on the board's decision to give all employees a 5% increase.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so on the gold sheet.
The budget.
Spence, Josh.
Yep.
Spence, board director. Yeah, by 24.
No, I got it.
So, and I think I ask this every year, and it's a request. So line in under regular instructions.
Subtotal, regular education, K to eight?
Well, well, it is a subtotal, but somehow I want it broken out, K four, five to eight, and nine to twelve.
Okay.
So much more informative.
Sure.
Then you have high school separate.
Well, it's, the only reason it's weird is because this is the way it's reported to the state. So basically we would take the 483,475 for grades five through eight and just make another category underneath. Fine, I'll do that for your next draft.
Thank you.
Sure.
Under special ed, there's two lines that say contracted services. Is that a, and it's not a subtotal.
So one is elementary instruction. So your first section is Creighton Village School. Section...
Doesn't say that.
Yeah, contracted services, high school is nine to 12 on the bottom.
I see.
Yep.
Right under roots is K to eight.
Yeah, that's a subtotal for K to eight.
I see.
So the $15,000 is to cover additional special education costs at your other high schools that are not covered by the contract.
I see. Okay. So second page, on the seven education services, contracted services, 75.
Yep.
Last year too, I see.
So $5,000 is your Alma system. Yep, and the $2,500 is to cover any technical issues that you may have contracted services. We do use stipended technology coordinator, if that's what you would like to call.
Services.
To keep all of your infrastructure moving forward.
So I think my surprise was when that 5,000 was mentioned last year, I thought it was a single purchase of a system.
No, $5,000 is the carrying cost every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we are hoping is that the state of New Hampshire, because they have a contract with Alma, a statewide contract with Alma, we're looking to hopefully get a reduction because all districts will be using Alma. We just haven't heard that that is the case, but that's what we're led to believe, that that may come down, just not in time for this budget.
Okay, so last year, legal services under school board, we, the total actual was $6,149. That's what we spent on legal fees last year.
Yep.
Somehow thought it was more than that.
No.
I'm surprised this year it's not higher.
That we've put in women. We've always budgeted, you know, some amount.
A little bit, yeah.
No, I mean, like the actuals for '22, '23, I'm surprised that number didn't go, because we used, we engaged lawyers quite a bit.
We don't have an actual for '22, '23 yet. That's the year we're in. So this is the actual for the year we just ended.
Oh, I see.
Twenty-one, twenty...
It always excuses me everyone, because the title of the column is total year estimate.
That's, that's, that's this budget plus we're moving forward. We're projecting out to the end of the year, yeah.
That would be the total in years, based on what we spent this year so far, it's 2,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so it's not going to be a precise amount.
It's not going to be a precise amount. It's your budget right now.
Oh, but 2,000 is the amount you think that we'll have spent this year.
That is your budget. So I'm expending the budget. I'm not looking for more than the budget at this point in time because I don't have bills to substantiate more.
Can you tell us what you would spend this year?
Yeah, that's, so $2,000 a budgeted number, not an actual.
Yeah, it's, it's a budgeted number right now. So I'll get the expense for you this year. I don't have it right at the tip of my fingers.
But I would expect it to come down though anyways, if we did spend more this year.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I mean...
I hope so.
We'll all be on good behavior.
The budget is a bottom line budget, so we spend it, we're going to, we'll cover it.
So I say you office, we're going to request to break down salaries by rule for transparency.
Will you be doing that in every category?
For salaries?
Yeah.
Less important, but you could.
You mean, instead of like having them parsed out, have a sheet that's just each position?
Yeah, it just says total salaries. Yeah, yeah.
Or maybe not benefits? I don't know if that's...
And maybe just for the SAU office. I mean, we could do it for all. So then we are always aware of how many people we have, and so on, what the roles are. So those...
Because that's always a point of confusion every year.
Yeah, exactly. It is. It's not amazing. Absolutely. Do you, did you put anything, you didn't yet, put like amounts into put into the tuition trust fund?
No, no, I didn't do anything.
I think last time we were only just more or less spitballing, like should we change our approach to budgeting?
So you were talking about what you would want to have in reserve for those trust funds. How many tuitions do you want to cover? That conversation leads to, do you want to change how you're budgeting for kids going, going out? So that's the bigger conversation.
Yeah, and you can't just flip the switch overnight. You have to build up the trust.
You have to, you have to work towards that because remember, your, your revenue sheet right now, if you take away from that. So there are two ways to fill that trust fund. One is taking from unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And the second way is to raise and appropriate. So you have to decide which way you want to go. And if you take from the unassigned fund balance, then that's going to reduce the amount of money going back for taxes. So it just, it's a strategic approach that the board would want to look at in terms of which way do you want to go.
Right.
So you have to set a goal. First thing would be to set a goal for tuition. You want to have 10 kids, 10 tuitions set aside. So 10 tuitions, you'd want $180,000 and you currently have 53. So you would make a goal for five years, every year throw in $25,000.
And just to make the point, that's not for special ed at all.
Nope. Just tuition, just tuition.
I feel like that's a, like a pretty big decision to be made and we should almost have like in advance, we come with some pros and cons of each, each direction and talk about that.
Ten might be...
Because you want to walk.
It may be a lot. You may want five.
Yeah.
It, it is important because the landscape is changing somewhat because Montessori has a waiting list and I don't know that we have any spots there for our fifth, or kids, fourth, current fourth graders. And that means if they're not there, they're going to be someplace else and that may be more expensive. So it's important that we at least keep everybody budgeted at a higher rate and be aware that we might need, yeah.
But right now, just for comparison, the number of kids that we have in Montessori, and you're saying that might be less, but the number of kids we have there and in Mount Royal, if you take that excess, what does that come to in one year?
So you have 18, 18 students and roughly $10,000. So it's, you know, between 160 and 180,000 that we're budgeting currently.
Every year, we basically have to fund for 10 students in some. So we could have that...
You could.
To aim at five.
Yep.
If that is a more reasonable number for us to look at.
I will support what Frank just said.
Yep, there is that.
Because speaking with, having Montessori, with the new education freedom accounts, a lot more families can afford to spend monthly. And so there's no law for, for students to come in anymore. So it's a game changer. That's a good thing.
Yep. And I think the same game changer, very similar, Mount Royal is definitely capacity driven too.
Exactly. There, yeah, there is.
Would Montessori be up for like discussing just guaranteeing us a certain number of slots every year as like part of the contract or?
We asked about that and...
Can I remember all those kids?
I think they, their legal advice was not to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So if they can get somebody in from pre-K all the way to A, they wouldn't want to save us spots for five to eight.
Right. That makes sense.
Interesting, yeah. So, yeah, I guess for now, just still to think about the tuition trust fund. Yes, we look at Montessori over the next couple of years and that'll help us... Yes, we look at Montessori over the next couple of years, and that'll help us figure that out.
Are there any other schools that we should be reaching out to? I, I remember, I think Amy at one of the meetings mentioned one in Claremont, that's a private school. I think it was like a Christian academy or something.
I thought that, I think at the end of last year, they closed.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe the answer's no, but.
Claremont Classical, yeah, classical school closed.
Yep, yeah. We never sent anybody there.
No.
All right, I mean, if there's other schools that we could add into our program that are good and have competitive pricing.
Sure, and ask for your table to, to, you know, a meeting to say, hey, do you do have other options? That, that exists in schools, if they exist, yeah. I mean, Frank, can, can you look around and see what, what's out there?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we need choices, so.
Yeah, exactly. Fascinating.
The Legerd Charter is working on expanding down into lower, raising to a middle school level. But they're not there yet, they're a long ways away, but that's the only thing I'm aware of at all that's changing right now.
Plainfield was very interested in our kids' number years ago, but I don't think anything ever came back.
Well, we didn't have any families request it.
But we could inform them about these options.
Ten, I mean, they offered just the bus.
Well, I think it was.
Yeah, that's hard, yeah, that's hard. That's great, but, you know.
Yeah, still.
Anyway, when we do our April meeting, we can extend that invitation to all of those schools.
Which is what you used to do, I mean, because Plainfield used to come and they'd set off.
That's right, that's right. Kearsage?
Kearsage, yeah.
I meant to ask this in the, the policy discussion, but the RSA that governs who we have to bus for, do we need to look more into that?
Yes.
And I think that, depending on what answer comes out of that, could have an impact on the budget. It could also make other school options attractive to people. So I think there's a whole topic around the buses that needs to be explored. Yeah.
I have suggested, over the past year, that to support Frank and Beth, and support the S A U, put it that way, that we hire some kind of administrative assistant to take some of the things that you do, right, to support you. Or maybe this would be a person who would, you know, keep the website up to date, right?
Yeah.
To.
So we have included that. It's actually in the principal's office and in, but it's generally intended for.
In salaries, so of course I know it's there. Yes, please break them all out, out all the roles. See what they are.
It's in the, in the principal's office.
And what, so, but I still don't understand, because the principal's office is going down by about twenty-four thousand, so we understood that to be the case because of salary change.
Yep.
So where's the salary for the, for the administrative assistant?
Oh, did I put it in the support salaries? It's in the support salaries, because there's ten hours in this budget for an administrative assistant, so.
I don't see that line.
So I'll find it for you. The, the proposed budget for the principal's office is down based on the new contract. So that's the principal's contract and no secondary position. So there's no mentor or Frank is out of that, that role.
Right.
So that's, that's where that is.
Right.
The ten hours is on the support staff side, and I'll have to go back and, and grab that for you. But I do have ten hours in this budget for administrative support.
Okay, but it's, it's not in this report?
Not in this category, no.
I mean, I was hoping to take input, it's not a new salary, then.
No, no, it ends, adds up to about less than five thousand dollars a year. It's very small, yeah.
For ten hours a week?
I'll get the exact numbers for you in the next draft, yeah.
And this person will support you two as well, right? The person would.
Will support Frank.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, next question's about warrants. I want, I would like a warrant for a multi-year contract over a certain dollar limit. You know, clearly, but if you have multi-year with Newport, but with us, I don't know what else there is, I don't know. But any, any multi-year thing should be separate from our list of people, so the town is to vote on.
So the tuition, the tuition article?
Yeah.
Are you negotiating a new tuition agreement? Okay.
You were supposed to meet with them last week.
I did. Right, and we are, we are having a meeting with them, but there's no warrant article.
For new contract, any multi-year contract.
So you want the, just to understand what you're looking for, you want a warrant article, basically, that says any multi-year contract over X dollars requires.
Town vote.
Town vote? Okay, that'll have to go to legal to, to draft that.
Yeah, but.
The town says, I don't want to spend sixty thousand million on a bus contract.
Always talk about, it's a really good question, so you.
So, and then how do you lock a vendor in? If you go through an R F P process to get a vendor for, let's just say, transportation, food service, if you can't lock them in until after a district meeting, that really is very challenging.
Didn't, like, didn't mean.
That's right.
Don't we have the same problem?
When?
Don't we have the same problem even with the regular budget, though?
Every, every year when we reorganize, one of the things in our reorganization list is reauthorization of those continuing contracts with the bus company and with all those people. And that, and we also go through a exercise of reauthorizing all of our contracts with all of our schools. We approve. And the current contract that we have with, so.
We do.
This year, when that comes up.
We have a board meeting where we.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, so this year, when that comes up, if you want to discontinue one of those, the only one that has a timeframe in it is the Newport contract. And if you, if you vote in April, probably, maybe the end of March, whenever we do the reorganization meeting, to not approve that contract, then that's our, your notice to them. They hear from that point, we will disassociate. That means you then have to go out and find somebody else to be your, we call it anchor school, but it's our school of record, really, who guarantees us all, that they will take all our students. I, I could not, I have looked a couple of times, and I couldn't, have not been able to find anybody. The meeting that I had, which I think this is an agenda item coming up, but the meeting that I had was to discuss with you folks the fact that our contract does say that we should be annually, we are supposed to be annually, we have not, with the Newport board to discuss our contract and the relationship. And so the superintendent there was going to bring that up with her board, and I have, it's on the agenda for me to bring up with us, but we need to have that meeting so that we can talk about how our kids are doing and what the issues are, concerns, and if you want to renegotiate. You know, we just went through a renegotiation years ago on how we figure out costs. Ready to do that again?
Just for clarification, Frank, would this be like a joint school board?
Yes, yeah, joint.
We have done that.
So that's.
Once or twice.
Yeah.
Couple of times.
Yeah, so that's the process.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have a sense of timing yet on that meeting?
No, if you guys have to say yes, then I'll contact Donna tomorrow and see what she's found out.
Wait, so you spoke with them last week about.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't set a date, because she had to talk to her board, I had to talk to you guys.
Is there, if I remember incorrectly, that their contract renews every three years?
No.
Or in perpetuity?
Yeah, annually.
Okay.
Unless they automatically renew, so we say no, and then there's a years, or they could say no, and then there's a year's period. With that, it does grandfather in any student who was already there that they're allowed to finish.
Okay.
All right, so if nobody wants those warrant articles?
So, so I just, yeah, I just want to understand what you want the warrant article to say.
Yeah.
I, I, if you could.
For the multi-year conscious, I mean, it sounds like there, it's not advisable to do that, okay?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, I'm just looking at more transparency to the town on different levels. You know, I feel like we got sideswiped by court for the tuition that they charged us last year. They had increased at eleven percent increase, and maybe another set of eyes in town would have found that before it happened, right? And to me, it was surprising. And maybe I reached that contract, maybe I don't understand contracts well enough, you know, and, and how they work. So that, that's what I was hoping, was another set of eyes. Or ten, if anybody gets interested.
Well, if I, an evening meeting with them, avoid that happening, right?
No, because you still have to come up with a idea. Nobody in the Newport school board is going to say, hey, you might want to go tuition rate, right? That's for us to figure out, so. I know, but meeting with them, yeah, we'll know what they're anticipating charging us, hopefully, and then we can try to negotiate. But, that's right, yeah, yeah. And that is, I mean, that's going to be, you know, that's what I.
I don't know what negotiating leverage we really have with them, to be honest.
So they have a, there's a defined formula that's based on the boards having agreed to this formula to set tuition. And that's, pick a random number and say, here's your tuition. It's a defined formula, it's based on their D O E twenty-five costs, which is what all schools do in the state of New Hampshire. So part of that meeting that you have with the Newport school board may be a negotiation of formula.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah.
That's what you have to be, yeah.
So Frankie, you need from us tonight, just the go ahead to schedule that.
To schedule a meeting with them, yes. Yeah.
Something we need to vote on, or we just say, go ahead?
You just say, go ahead.
When was the last time we approached other schools with asking about interest in becoming the anchor school?
A year ago.
A year, yeah, okay. Who did you approach?
I, I talked to the superintendents and I asked them to check with their boards.
Is there any?
And I do that every time things start to get a little shaky. So because we want to be proactive, if something does fall apart, you know, make sure we have a place for our kids.
What's the main reason why they say no?
They, they don't, they'd like to be able to say no if something particularly difficult or, you know. So sometimes they, they don't want to be challenged with meeting particular needs, or they don't want to have to deal with particular behaviors, or.
Right. When I talked to the principal from Sunapee when he was here for the open house, he basically said they accept more or less everybody.
But they have actually, but they have actually refused such.
But they can refuse based on the contract.
While I've been here.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So somebody at our policy committee meeting told us that, I don't remember who the actors were here, but somebody was a resident of Sunapee. Sunapee paid, because they, they weren't performing well enough academically, that Sunapee paid tuition for them to go to Kearsage. They don't accept everybody, even kids in their own district.
Okay.
I think that's completely accurate version, but in that case.
I mean, that's what she said, I can only face.
I appreciate that, but I don't.
Did I misrepresent?
I'm simply saying, it's the whole explanation, and I'm not looking to say more.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking was if we could understand what their objections are, maybe there's a way we could, you know, work with them better, or find a way for these schools to be more interested in.
We have more and more students going there, and so they have more and more experience with us. We've been good partners, you know? Yeah.
Other question for bad direction, is there any precedent for one of these formulas to include not just cost expenses, but also achievement? Like, we will give you this much, but if the kids aren't actually low, is that not sort of like sportsism, but reversed?
So I've, I've never seen that, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. And I think the school board, if, if that's the, the community, or they bring it up when they have their joint meeting.
Who determines if the kid is, um, performing?
I, I, at the school board, they would have to discuss whatever the parameters.
You'd almost have to do it based on just the school's overall performance.
And I've, I've never, I've never seen that.
Which that's something actually so many times, and I don't have such a small fraction in these schools. I don't know how you would ever determine based on that.
I would associate, like, growth of the kids.
Right, individually, our.
Ideally. And we do get reports about them every year from the schools, so we have information about. And we base it on that information, I mean, that's our best way to do that.
And our tuition.
Sorry?
So do we pay more because they have salary?
Yeah, I know.
Pay for results?
So, I mean, I could say, because the base rate could be lower, and you get incentives to make sure the kids are actually progressing.
I'm just saying, I think our, we'll.
So then do we pay the full price, if that's what's going on?
And the rest of the area, we brought some phone, you know, just because they're thinking on the rest of math, and you're creating technical programs where the kids are learning great skills, and they might not be facing the S A Ts or raising that test that we see, but there's a lot of areas where there's all those outside factors in terms of another reason, but by instead of just making somewhere flat, we'll say, hey, the kids aren't the rest of the time, hey, I mean, but kind of paying in charge of saying, is it different rest of what these, in this, these living, so, family situation? You know, if it is, it's how like an extracurricular, so it'd be weird to, but a point is, I want to see these numbers, otherwise you have no benefit.
So Tom, there's only, there's only one standardized test in preschool, and it's in those grades. We can't just use the test as a sample of the class, right?
But I mean, what is the maximum?
What?
What is the maximum?
This proposal just came up.
My, 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 my question to that, there isn't really one.
It's a problem, so you solve it, figure out what you would like to see. My question was just in principle, could you do that? I'm not saying that you have one, I'm saying in principle, is there anything?
I'm saying probably not, because of all the different areas.
I definitely think it's worth exploring, discussing the formula.
I hear that daily, when I go to Newport, I would, and, yes, and I agree.
To your point, I mean, if we're, when we do have a discussion with them, that is going to be a focal point of the conversation, so we should.
And I think, I told her that I would like to see them give a report to us, our students, that they could, but they should be able to put together a report on how our kids are doing.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
What is Sunapee charged again? I, I forget, for their tuition.
Seventeen, seven, eighty-six a student.
Pretty much the same.
Say lower if they're not, their price when this whole one started. They drop their rates, then the report drop their rates, and then Sunapee drop their rates again.
Sunapee's below, Sunapee has consistently been below Newport.
Just by a little bit.
Yeah. No.
Sunapee just sets it.
No, they've set the rate.
They only. They really love our kids.
Yes.
And I wonder whether they might even be open to dropping something slightly.
Yeah.
That's true. That's worth talking to them about. True. I mean, it's worth asking.
It is.
I think so. I mean, Sunapee gets much higher marks than Newport, that was it.
Can we leave with the Sunapee school board?
You can certainly ask to meet to discuss rate changes or something, absolutely.
Would that be the, in your opinion, the most appropriate way to approach?
I think so, yeah. Uh, sometimes school board chairs have outside conversations and just like superintendents do. So I can talk to Russ and say, look, this is, our board is interested, perhaps having a conversation with your board about expanding our relationship.
Yeah.
And, um, you think they'd be interested? Would it be worthwhile for our board chairs to have a conversation and see what he says? Approach it that way. You know, we'll talk to his board chair. You know, but that would start a conversation, I think, and do that's a good idea. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Um, alright, I have one thing to add. Um, and I think I talked to you about this before, that's. Yes, the budget is separate from the district budget. I don't know if that is to separate the Warren articles, but it could be. And I, I don't, I'm not strong about that, but.
So it, you're saying you want to do the operating budget and pull out the SAU budget and put the SAU budget on a separate, right?
I probably not, but just to make it clear what's going on and maybe just breaking out the roles is, you know, one thing that will really help. Again, I feel like it's been less transparency than the town has wanted.
Okay.
Right? It might just be roles.
My recollection is the confusion is generally around the, the payroll side in the roles. Just because they're all broken out in different budget categories and some people are in multiple categories.
And so where's that?
Well, it, I know that it's, that's, there's a reason you do it. I'm just saying it confuses people.
Yeah, there's just one salary mark that you jump on, that's all.
We don't need, I don't know that you need to do Warren articles. I mean, we can.
No, I wouldn't.
In our demonstrate, in our slides and in the way we explain things, we can, we can organize it however people think they need it. So that they know.
I think it might be more confusing to have it separate when it ever happens. Um, and it might seem like something different is being proposed and tried, then it's been done in the past.
It's already, it's something that.
Yeah, and ultimately, if they have a problem with the SAU budget, they can, they can be brought up on the floor and discussed.
Yes.
Sure.
That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else? So we're going to go, um, to the public hearing with this budget, one million seven four, as it's, as it's written, correct?
Yeah, my big question was on Newport and you haven't answered on that yet, so I just have a feeling that it's not going to be five percent.
So I can tell you what's happening around. The tuitions that I've seen have been seven to 10%.
Yeah.
Um, and I deal with a lot of tuitions.
What did you count for in here?
Five.
Five. I put in five. But then you, you always have the option to adjust your tuition category because you know that you're budgeting for every child to go. For, so if you need to make a, an adjustment there, you certainly can. That's pretty much the only place in your budget where if you were going to adjust something, I mean, unless you're going to change your staffing or you're going to change.
So sorry, so we're.
You're budgeting for every student at the Newport rate.
Right.
That's the board's practice.
Right, but do you think their tuition is going to go up?
I don't know. I'm, I'm telling you what I'm seeing.
In the area.
In the area.
Tuitions have gone up.
Yep.
So we probably want to see one with 10% and one with five.
Hopefully we'll have an answer by then and, and it will become a moot point, but we should be prepared for both.
And yes, exactly.
Why, why do you think we don't? You said you genuinely have these numbers by November.
We generally have to ask repeatedly to get these numbers, and we have. I mean, both Frank and I have, have reached.
Got a whole new.
Got a lot going on now.
That office is all brand new. Yeah, and their support people in there have changed as well. So that's made it a little bit more difficult.
They have a new business.
Can you get the numbers that go into the formula and then crunch the?
It's their formula, though. It's their numbers. It's their numbers. They need to come up with.
That doesn't sound very.
It's not ours.
Wait, only because you don't know what your MS.
I don't have access to any of those documents. No.
But that's, that's the piece.
They, they're using the MS twenty-five as the basis. Or the DOE twenty-five.
Okay.
Just back to two thoughts on Sunapee, there's definitely concern in the community that Sunapee. Has gone down for time there, therefore the cost per student has gone up. So that equating may make our studies more appealing. And I'm going to. Kathy, if more four-year students go to Sunapee at some point, I think that four-years, you know. I, I would want to consider transportation, so that's going to put a different cost.
Yeah.
It is interesting.
Some of the students.
I would think we would want to offer that, yeah.
Looking at your anchor school, you would need to, but then, um, consider too, they, they go to Sunapee, they still got the tax in Newport, so they're not.
That's true.
Right.
But if there was a cost to decrease to going to Sunapee, that could just be put towards the bus budget.
I think that's a good point, I would say, if we're like, the board's down with their board. If you're going to go, like, oh, let's hope. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But honestly, we could change our bus group. I mean.
Sure you can.
Now, we send kids to Newport, not Sunapee. If, if Sunapee becomes our anchor school, we say, go to Sunapee and not Newport. And with our kids not going to Los Hurly, that's a possibility, right? Sounds like first step is.
Get kind of.
Of course, we have that meeting in, what was it, April? Oh, yes, of course.
And they may not be in all.
Yep. So I'm thinking about. Any other budget related stuff? Budget, budget? Alright, moving on, we've already did the next segment. My board meeting with SA forty-three to review the according school district experience per Newport school district contract. So we're good there. Um, and then the final thing before the form, do we have a non-public? It's in the agenda, if I'm asking?
They don't have.
It's in the agenda.
Um. It's always in the agenda.
Yeah.
Right. I don't always know, it's at the end of the meeting, and then I hear. That's all. The last thing is those repentant evaluation surveys to collect any that.
I think.
I was originally sitting over there. Test surveys should be way. I was originally sitting over there. And public form number two. It is, it's also not. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I love hearing the board and the public interacting and talking through creative solutions. But I just wanted to add, this isn't a criticism of anybody, it's just a comment that we always have to be aware of. We're here in this town forever, because we're a small town, we want a very fine, respectful line between clarity and openness and non-faithfulness. And sometimes I, you know, and try to make one better, we lose another, so we have to be very careful about that. And I'm not, I'm just, we had ready, well, um, breaking lines down to individual salaries. That's all public information. Excuse me, that's all public. I, yeah, maybe you're putting a change in your reports for that. I, I'm just, and, and I'm not, it's not criticism at all. I'm just saying, we have to have a balance when we're going to those discussions. Things about also finding out how students are doing, and because we're genuinely concerned. But aside from our town, we're always looking at special ed budgets, we're not looking at families, we're looking at community, you know what I mean? And I just think it's always that to me in our town, at any time you're talking about, things like that, that we are so, so. We know each other's shoes, and why shouldn't we, and how?
I, I think my government legal system, your problems are part of this life. I have to ask to create line or bad discussion regarding policy committees. I want to say that I think the policy committees and the work we've done in the policy panel are colossal at the time. In the public privacy sector, the term managed by policy is considered an insult. That's what you say a lot of men who go about managing by policy, it's not legal, so that's such a stupid issue. Look how much time we're spending in this stuff. The fact that you, Joey should remember, back several years ago, when we were brought down in this, now, the board has a lot of important things to do. This is not a one, much better things the board and publicly spending their time on. The fact is, operations, building, that sort of thing is governed by state law, less than federal law, and the school. We do not need another layer of law to do anything here. The fact is, and it's hard to report those, board is not constrained by its own policies. Board member does not have to go into a house, because there are prerogative to go in any way that is lawful. So in my opinion, these policies are minimal serving purpose. They are consuming a great deal of time. And they're just, it's busy work, and it bothers us down, makes us very soon to not get it done. And contracts have been told, they are not curtainite against lawsuits. Anyone who thinks the policy should protect you from a lawsuit, needs to go to the search pool in all of the school districts for Cleveland policy. Try and open some paper that gets used all the time. So it, it seems like they may be wasting effort. Oh, and I also like to say, talking about the, what the kids are doing is good. Because the, the, the bullshit we do here, it's one of the youth protection acts. I think the budget's important, it is important, but there's a lot of nonsense to deal with, some of our own making some mistakes. But to know if it's great, if some parents don't call or don't know what their kid's going to get next year, giving them an idea is very useful. And unfortunately, I, I'm in a situation, you know, now with my kids' voice, I certainly haven't resolved that to me anyway. So it, that's valuable. So all the stuff that goes on in the board meetings, eighty percent we should come within about it, loss of function. I think talking about what the schools are doing is valuable, so keep that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that started out saying this basically saved budgets last year. And I'm wondering what that means, that we should expect the same results that we got last year. Do you guys at the board would say a little about what those results are, what we're getting for one point seven million dollars?
And what do they have to say? What was the last?
If you're happy.
What we're getting for one point seven million dollars is whether you're happy. And why you wouldn't ask for more if you're not?
And why what?
And if you're not happy, why you wouldn't ask for more, so that you can make things better?
I mean, it is interesting. You know, last year, the beginning of last year, we were promised that we were going to be thrilled with the math performance, so that's what we're going to do at the end of the year in Court Village School. And then the standardized test scores just didn't keep up with what that was, but the, the formative ones did, but not the, the, the state tests. And so that, that is, that's an area of mind disappointment, and that's ninety-one percent of the students. You know, what are we doing in Court Village School to make sure our kids are progressing in reading and math? So that was a particular matter. You know, again, I was told I was going to just blown away, and I wasn't. Wow. Beginning of last year. I know myself. Like Frank, I think, maybe you. I'm fascinated. I don't typically make promises. Thank you. I just, I'm using these programs, I just remember this, but I mean, I don't have it written down, but that's why I remember it. That the way the teachers are working together and so on, it was just going to be, that was just going to be great, and everything's going to be so much better than it was. Have you talked to any of the parents to find out how they feel about their kids' progress? I haven't.
That's a, that was weird to my ear.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that was weird to my, no, I just want to say, I mean, I have three successful children who have gotten a great education. The, they're the school right here, and are being really successful, and, you know, I say move on to the other public schools. So yeah, I mean, I, I think we're getting our money for our, but I think we, we are doing the job. And, you know, coming from that, so I think that we're, we're on the right path.
I don't have access to the families, it's like you thinking that everybody knows everybody. Um, I don't. And it's pride and compassion too, so I'm not even sure how I'm going to approach them.
My question sounds.
Don't choose to tell.
So.
I think if one school were feeding a proposed idea or report of how the students are doing well on the other level.
This is one of the reasons that I asked the question about Sunapee is that, um, I mean, conceivably for about the same cost, we could be getting better results for our children, but one of the worst ranked schools in our area and one of the best ranked schools. So what can we do to make it easier for families to go to their ranks? And in this particular case, it might not even require any additional spending. They're pretty much the same in cost. And maybe we can negotiate Sunapee even less, but I mean.
So I'm hoping on Saturday we get to the very questions being asked, because that is one of the things I think we've asked parents to respond to.
Yeah, and it's on the surveys.
Yeah, are, are you happy with what was going on or not?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, yeah, so.
So I think we'll get some feedback on that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it's, uh, this year is turning out to be a difficult year for us, uh, working in the school. Last year was not an easy year either, and I'm not going to make any excuses, but yeah, across the state and across the country, uh, there is a lot of gaps caused because of the disruption of COVID. And not just whether schools were open or closed, but, um, just people being sick and people being home and isolation, interruption, and all those kinds of things that can affect how kids learn and retain information. And for us this year, we have not been able to hire that full-time teacher that we budgeted for and wanted. And we've recognized in our last few board meetings that the people we do have are doing extraordinary work. And we've, uh, we've, you know, tried to increase their, their salaries a little bit for the rest of the year to reflect our appreciation of that. And I think, um, that's all good, you know? And I, that was just, Nicole, you said something earlier in your report that. It was looking like our kids were making good gains this year in some of the testing you're just seeing, uh, even though the testing's not done. And I'm thinking that, uh, that's really good. That's pretty amazing. That's a real tribute to the staff that we have working here, that our kids are going to be making good gains in spite of the fact they've been short part of the teacher all year long so far, so, yeah. And I'm curious to see what shows up on, on the, uh, surveys.
Tom?
Um, what's the meeting on Sunday?
Ten. Yeah.
And then, does the public have access to the raw data, or is it going to be presented as like a conclusion?
Okay, so I talked with Lynn and it's not, we haven't done this stuff yet, but, um, and I don't know if she's talked to you since I took her, but, um. We were thinking that, um, she's got to create and print off the summary charts, because all this data that makes the charts. And we were going to, uh, probably have about ten table groups, maybe with ten chairs at each. And we have two printed copies. We didn't want to make hundreds of all these things. That's a lot of paper. But two printed copies, and then we need to get the link. We need to freeze up the data so nobody can mess with it, which I think you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, once everything's all in, and then, uh, give people that link so they can actually see it all as well. To work with. And I.
But we will be.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And then, um, our hope is. Well, um, this isn't set, so I don't want to be held to this, but I thought was to do, um, uh, breakout groups and to do two rounds. First, a quick presentation, but then, uh, two rounds of breakout groups, because it's going to be a lot of people with not a lot of time. because it's going to be a lot of people with not a lot of time. And we want to get the info, a lot of information. So the first breakout group would be, we'll identify the 10 major areas. If there are 10, maybe there's only seven, but whatever they are. And that's what she's going through now. She, as she goes through the data, figuring out what they should be. And asking people for the first round, go to the group of your greatest interest. So we may get a group of 30 people and another group with four. But that's your interest. That's where your knowledge is. That's where your passion is. We want that information written down on those topics. Then when you come in the door, you're going to get a name tag, maybe with a colored dot on it or something. And then you'll be randomly, the second round, you'll be randomly grouped. And we hope that having, we'll go through the same exercise. But it'll be a richer, maybe richer conversation with, with different kinds of opinions and interests. All of that will be put on chart pack sheets. So at the end of the first round, we'll put the sheets up. We'll do a gallery walk. Everybody go around, see what everybody else said about the various things. Then we'll go into the second thing and do the same thing. We probably won't be able to bring any summary out of that, but all of that information could then go to the committee. So when they look at governance, they'll have all the stuff from the surveys. They'll have the stuff from the targeting group that was really interested in governance. And they'll have the stuff from the randomized group. So we're going to look at problem identification, solution, and then a third sheet, which will be other, either concerns or issues or questions, whatever. That's, that's currently how we're setting it up.
Are they?
Yeah.
We're going to, we're, we're going to keep people on tight schedules. Yeah.
It'd be, it'd have to be a quick. The presentation will have to be quick.
Oh, the presentation will be very quick. Yeah, we want people. I told Lynn today, she said.
Everybody, sorry, we still have to do going on here. Can I ask one lady to do that? Yes. So what in the form? Do we have a date set for the next strategic plan?
Yeah, I have one in my book.
Let me go back to the last.
We have this February 6th and we have, I have February 6th.
And then March 6th also. And then March 6th as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then the public just break the date for them to know by date.
That's right.
So so far I'm impressed with the work that people are doing. I really am. I've done a lot of these over the years. It's like, it doesn't always go smooth, but people are committed, so it's a good sign.
Why is the budget going to be up at the school when there's expected to be a lot of turnout? So we can have internet. Hopefully shared or she's still on, she's still on. That's a good question. How we can handle a full of people? I mean, I don't know how many people are going to come. If it's a hundred, we can't clearly, right? I don't know. We can't, we can't have a hundred. We can't have a place. We've had.
Standing.
Probably going to be tight over there. It will, yeah. So then maybe don't do it online. That's a good way of handling that. Which means is why?
Don't do it. Don't do it. Budget hearing meeting.
Yes. Don't, don't have online presence. You want to come, come to me. I know, I mean, it would be great if it could be viable, right?
You just don't want people to have to count on it and then have it not work.
Exactly, have it not work, exactly. I think that's what the.
So does that mean we're back here?
Sorry.
Does that mean we're back here for the public hearing with no Zoom link?
What do you think? Well, you still need to present correctly. You still will have to have the projector. Because that was the whole, I thought that was a good bridge.
Well, the projector is not, I can bring it. It's not fabulous.
Right, it's very.
It's, it's a little blurry, but I can, yeah, I'll bring that. I'll bring the projector in the stand.
Good point, but I, yeah, I mean, there's only so many people we can fit.
That's right. That's fine. I will.
So we do it here.
Yeah.
So here's the two. And I know online.
No online.
Can I just, I mean, you, I know you struggled today, but you got to work, right?
I mean, you could put, why don't you put something in the notice that says, with no guarantee that it'll work?
Yeah.
And I wonder if you think there might be bigger presence. You guys can look on microphones. And I even know that there are some people who like ask.
We don't have access to. That's where all the stuff is. You get it open.
They told you that's good or just.
I can't have the passcode to that room. That's not secure.
Speaking of which, we probably need that for, for Saturday. Microphones for Saturday, I think.
Yeah, we have our system.
Right, you have all the entire system.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we bring that here then on the? You said you have microphones.
You want to carry it? Carry it. Sweet. Anything else? Public. All right. Okay, get a second.
Second.
Oh, is it fair? I, I need 20. All right, so.
Uh, usually it's a school board.
Okay.
I will.
I'm here, here. I know I've done it.
Doesn't matter.
Either I can do it.
Yep, yep. We'll, I'll update, update the slide. And we can add, I'm happy to present it at the end of the tab. However, it all works out, you guys may decide you want to make some adjustments to the budget. And then I will get in.
All right.
And then the school, that's when you'll, you'll do your powerful prediction.
So we, I think we've probably done it both ways.
Yeah, I don't know that we've always done it like this, but yeah, that's.
Well, this one's going to be a little bit different because.